I call the meeting to order. Let's go by this clock. Would everyone please stand and face the flag? And if so inclined, join us if you do the pledge.
Let's pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Sampson, do you have anything to add to the agenda?
I do not.
Anyone here have anything pertinent to add? Okay, hearing nothing, I will look for a motion to approve the agenda as shown.
I'll make a motion.
Jo Lynn?
I'll second.
Katie on the second. Any other discussion? All in favor of approval of the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Schedule presenters, we have none. Public input, you all see the paragraph there, and most of you see the paragraph there, but you're allowed three minutes to talk about anything that's on the agenda for tonight. Does anyone wish to speak? Shutting down public input. Moving on, consideration to approve the finance report. Josh?
Yeah. Cash flow worksheet, you're kind of accustomed to seeing each month for finance. We pretty inundated with finance information in the next two meetings, made as the initial budget for fiscal '25 and June, the final revised budget for fiscal '24. Some of the highlights here would be, as we talked about for really kind of the last two years, with that CTE HVAC project reimbursement, as we've been able to do some cash flow there and earn interest. We've had a lot of projects that were being able to pick off that long-term facility maintenance list by interest earnings and some cost savings during that project. And as we're able to cash flow that, actually the funds are kind of owed from that project back to the district in cash. It's really just more of a cash flow tool. Some of the bigger items that are going to be there in the next couple of months as they come through is Dakota County and Guteu County taxes. You'll kind of know your property taxes, your first payment will be due in May, and that's when we will receive kind of our first receipt of that for the fiscal year. Oh, sorry, the calendar year will operate different for our district. And then on the right hand side, I have under the expenditures. Pretty typical throughout the rest of the fiscal year, up to note would be usually as we get towards the June 15th, June period payroll, sometimes they can be a little bit higher payrolls as there are payouts for the fiscal year kind of those payrolls. And also, you'll see the spring coaches in that kind of the May period payroll. Other than that, really nothing too extraordinary to point out. This goes through the fiscal year as I go through preliminary budget for '25 and final revise for '24. Also, we're working on doing the cash flow worksheet for the entire fiscal '25. We'll have that in our office. The important thing for us to note is, one, we're not looking to have a great anticipation borrowing, which is good for our district. And two, to note that even though that number is sometimes in the $3 million for cash, that's all funds combined, not just general fund. That's debt service community and food service and the like. So there is a difference between cash fund balance and fund balance for the district. Have any questions? I can do my best to answer.
Questions for Mr. Davison? If not, I would look for a motion to approve the finance report as shown.
I will take a motion to approve.
Clint on the motion?
I'll second.
Second by Brian. Any other discussion? All in favor of the approval of the finance report, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Consent agenda, items under the consent agenda are considered routine and will be enacted under one motion. Any event a board member wants to discuss any item, it can be removed from the consent agenda for a separate action. Usually, we start with the acceptance of gifts, and I will turn that over to Mr. Sampson.
Yes, we have a lot of generous gifts this month as usual, but this is probably a little bit more highlighted. You got to break the list or I will get started. We will start with $250 from Gemini for elementary activity account, $250 from James Altop for robotics, $250 from Northland Safety Solution for robotics, $1,500 from RE/MAX Results for robotics, $500 from Showpost Hay and Straw for robotics, $200 from Pioneer Seed for robotics, $200 from Ronald Freberg for robotics, $1,000 from the American Legion Post 0142 for robotics, $300 from Minnesota Ag Power Incorporated for robotics, $500 from JMH Fitness LLC for robotics, $1,000 for J&amp;J Aircraft Maintenance for robotics, $5,750 from the Ed Foundation for robotics, $654.90 from the Ed Foundation for foam floor tiles for Barb Monroe, $550 from the Ed Foundation for art department display for Mr. Fogarty, $432.78 from the Ed Foundation for durable play items for Barb Monroe, $125 from the Ed Foundation for solar eclipse glasses from Mrs. or former Mrs. Dyson, $500 from Highland Sanitation for robotics, $400 from Community Resource Bank for robotics, $200 for Minnesota Wood Crafting for robotics, $500 from Snap Fitness for robotics, $1,000 for J&amp;J Aircraft Maintenance and Consulting for robotics, $500 from the American Legion for the eighth grade civics class, $800 from the Cannon Falls Fire Department Relief Association for the interact culture class, $5,000 from Sweet Harvest Foods for the art department at the high school, $1,000 from the Mayo Foundation for Cannon Falls Area Schools, $500 from the Cannon Falls Fire Department for fourth grade Eagle Beloved trip, $2,000 from the fire department for two $1,000 senior scholarships, $500 from Twist Solutions for robotics, and finally, $225 from Progressive Insurance Foundation for the general donation. Thank you all for your generous donations this month.
Can I say something real quick?
No, you can take your time.
You can get them if you want.
Can I say real quick, we got all these donations from robotics. I hope you're going to speak to that.
Yes, well, and I am just always super grateful for our community and how you support our schools in every which way. But I did get to, or my husband and I went down for the robotics competition and just want to tell you what an amazing opportunity this was for all of those kids. They got to see just all these amazing different countries and the way that they do their things and they do their robot and talking with other kids. And they had Innovation Fair at the top level of this convention center and where they could talk with different potential employers and see what kind of fields there are out there for people who like to work in these things. They had everything from manufacturing and creating kidneys and hearts to animatronics with Disney. And they had like emotional support robots that I have to say was a little bit creepy to see because it looked really real and if you couldn't see the back of the head being, it looked like a real person talking and you could talk to it. And just to allow the kids to have those interactions and be able to try those things and see what they can do in the future. I mean NASA was there and just all these wonderful opportunities that the kids just got to do whatever, you know, how they want. And our kids did amazing. At one point, they were ranked third on Friday and then, you know, they just got, some of the competitions got a little tougher and so they didn't get their ranking points. But they ended up seventy, or 25th out of 75 in their division. And they were pretty bummed that they didn't get to go into the playoffs. But I say making it there and doing this was so amazing for these kids and something they're going to remember for the rest of their lives. So I'm really thankful to all of these people who have donated the extra money for robotics this year because those kids really got a good experience and it was really fun to see them shine. So, so yeah, thank you.
We usually have them come in at some point during the year and speak to us. It'd be nice to have a little more extended time where they could tell us how their experience was, just.
And if we could show some pictures and stuff. Because it was, it was a lot of, we took a lot of good, like it was amazing to see like the convention center was set up like in a long line and there were eight divisions going on all at the same time. It was very stimulating. So that got a little noisy and very overwhelming at times for me. But, but the kids just, they rolled with it and they figured it all out. It was, it was just really, really neat to be a part of, so.
Super cool.
It's exciting to hear.
But I'm sure that they would. A couple of the kids would come in and talk.
Maybe a re-tap, which you're not setting that up.
Thank you. We've read the resolution, personnel items, monthly items. Does anyone have anything that they would like to bring out from the consent agenda? You can take a look at it. And when you're ready, I'd like to hear a motion to approve the consent agenda as shown.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Katie on the motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Jo Lynn. Any other discussion? All in favor of the approval of the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is carried. Who presents the report? Mr. Sampson?
Yeah, I have a couple items that were connected to the agenda items, but there's another one on here and one that's not listed here that we're made aware of middle of the week, but we're still working on. But so some board members had asked about doing some classroom visits after our last meeting and I'm wondering if you guys, I want to let you know that we're probably shooting for sometime in the middle of May. If you guys can shoot me a date. Do we have specific dates that we wanted? I just remember the middle of May that we talked about.
It wasn't as important to me, so I didn't pay attention to specific dates.
Okay.
So. You can whatever that.
Why don't, if I, if I give you guys enough time, if I said it's going to be this day, can you guys clear out some stuff? Or do you guys have any specific conflicts you want to stay away from? Just email me.
I was saying, can I shoot some day options?
You can shoot me some day options, yep. That would work. And then I'll match them up with everybody's and try to get as many together as I can.
Sounds great.
All right. And then just a heads up, and we are still working through this, but the preschool registration numbers were down. And so we will, we have to take some action at our next board meeting, but we want to finalize some of that stuff and bring back recommendation of what we need to do with that. Area preschool numbers are down as well. So I'm wondering if it's just a COVID bubble that came through, if you will, but.
When you say down, are you saying a few, handful?
Um.
In general?
I can't remember off the top of my head, but it probably had to do with some staff.
Fifteen to twenty?
Fifteen to twelve, yeah. So just so that you're aware of that, and we will bring something back in May. Other than that, unless you guys have questions, that's all I have.
Well, we still have one more preschool screening coming up. Go ahead.
Okay, no questions for Jeff? We will move on. No old business. Under new business, consideration to approve the revised '24-'25 school calendar, showing all-day staff development Fridays.
What would a board meeting be without having a calendar issue to deal with? Sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off there.
That's it?
So last year's legislative session, the state passed the READ Act. And like, I guess I won't go too far into my feelings for the state currently, but they still haven't completely finalized how they're going to run the training, but we do know what we know right now. And we do know that we have to create time within the work calendar for staff training, additional staff training that's going to be required. And it's probably going to be a two-year stint of training. And the first part of the training starting next year is going to be with pre-K through elementary and special ed and paras needing to be trained. And let me get, let me know if I get ahead of my skis then.
That sounds right.
Okay, on some of this stuff. But the time required for the training puts us into needing more staff development time during the school year. And so the solution that we've come up with administratively is to make our half-day PLC days into full day, no school for kids. And then the other half of that PLC day would be staff development dealing with the READ Act. And so this passes the first year. We will break back another calendar adjustment in the future for the middle school, high school piece as well once we hopefully know more coming up. And hopefully, there's not a surprise at the end of this legislative session that would require us to adjust the calendar again.
So by taking away those number of days, what are we at for?
Student days.
Yeah.
We're still fine with student days. We can't really add those back on at the end because that then takes us out of bounds for the contracts that we have with people for their work days. And so we'd have to pay them outside, which there's no funding attached to the training piece of this, of course. And so, um, where is your question going?
Well, just how many, how does this affect our total number of student days?
So a couple of years ago, when we had so many snow days, we did find out that we do have more days available past regular snow days of what we're getting funded for.
Okay.
And so we are using those up. Long story short, hopefully, we don't have that many snow days next year.
Or you'd have to make the snow days up.
We would, more than likely, have to make the snow days up. Because if you remember two years ago,
Yep.
we were six, seven, eight days past, even the online days.
Yeah.
So.
So just looking at our proposed calendar for next year, we have 13 staff development days? Does that sound right?
Yeah.
So we'll have 13 less days that our kids are coming to our building? I understand a half day.
Total teaching time, it's probably what, four and a half days?
It's nine, nine days.
Nine days?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because we had 174 and it was the Fridays, the PLC Fridays go from a two-hour early release to a whole day.
So nine days, nine less days our kids are going to come to our building? And four, four and a half less days of learning?
Of those nine days, those were the early outs though, right?
They were all early outs, yep.
I mean, so.
Right, so, but.
Does that affect the funding?
Four and a half days total.
No.
No.
Because it's staff development. Okay.
Is it like 168 that you're required? Or what's that number again?
172?
Is it? Okay.
No, that isn't right either. It's, I'll get back to you on that.
Otherwise, because where are we at?
We're at 160, we'll be at 165 days in both of us next year.
I think, I know that's a, it's a St. Paul issue, but it's rough on our community and our families to, you know, and I, I looked into the READ Act. I think it's a good thing. I think our, you know, we have to obviously train our people and I think it has to be done, but there's no alternative ways to.
The other piece of this, the way they're breaking out the training is that they're not training all of our teachers at once.
Right.
So they're even breaking, this is a two-year and sometimes maybe even a three-year.
It depends on how, which vendor, training vendor. We chose the one that had the least number of hours, so.
Yeah.
So then my other question would be, when a, say a teacher graduates from college and say we hire them, are they going to be trained on this in college? Like, they're going to come to us ready or we're going to have to? Because you said two years.
It's funny how you picked up on that right away, too.
Yeah, so.
Those are questions that we've all asked the people at MDE when they've done sessions on the READ Act and they don't have an answer for us yet. Most likely, the answer is no.
Yes.
We will have to train them.
So then how will we handle individual, or you know, onesies, twosies? Good question.
Great question.
Okay. And I'm, to be clear, I know this is not a us issue or a teacher. It's just, it's hard on the community to expect them to adjust like this.
I get that, at least all your legislators have to figure out a different way.
Well, I know, it's just.
But I think it's good to get it out as early as possible and not have them sprung on.
We are treading on a little bit of ice, you know, assuming that the legislature is not going to make any more changes to this before the end of May. But if we, you know, even wait another month, our people.
Me personally, this just seems like this is a step towards a four-day school week at some point.
I don't know about that. There are some schools that are talking about that, but that's a conversation for a different day. One thing I did want to make a comment though, when you talk about the number of staff development days, there are some things that we need to have staff development days for in addition to the added training. So there's contract or license renew, renewing hours that teachers have to get. And there's other items that we have to, we have to keep teaching. So we have to basically have our normal staff development each year also.
So in, so in any of those staff development days currently, there's nothing that could fall off and, you know, and say, okay, we're trained up on this. We can now come back with the READ Act. It's still.
Keep in mind, some of those that are, I guess, labeled as staff development days are work days also for teachers to be grading and other things in the core also. Part of those are half days.
Okay. The amount of time with OLA core training that our staff is doing is, is it 57 or 54 hours total?
54 rings a bell.
54 and three of those, so there's 51 hours are asynchronous online training and three hours of synchronous online training. So they want you to do so many modules, then everybody meets, and then do so many modules and everybody meets. So it's just, we don't have the staff, even if we took all of our staff development time that we would normally have in a school year and devoted it all to READ Act, we wouldn't, we'd be short of time to do that.
Thanks. Yeah, I just want to understand better, so thanks.
Your frustrations are coming through. It's kind of what you, we've always been faced with the MDE calls the shots here and we just have to buckle, I guess. I don't know what the right terminology is, but it is a frustrating thing for parents, oh, everyone actually.
I think in the long run, the READ Act will be good. It's just a matter of getting through the training, getting everybody trained up appropriately.
Good questions. Any, anyone else wish to speak to the revised calendar? If not, I would look for a motion to approve.
I'm going to approve.
Luke by Luke?
I'll second.
Seconded by Katie. Other discussion? All in favor of the revised '24-'25 school calendar, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is carried. Discussion and possible action regarding the referendum?
At our last meeting, Sue Peterson presented the community survey results and I wanted to allow this time to allow any discussion among you guys to see what you wanted to do. If you decide to go out for an operating levy this fall, we have timelines that we have to meet for resolutions in regards to the election, that part of the election specifically, not just the board seats and stuff. And so those would probably start happening in June at the latest. If you wanted directly to come back and start gathering those resolutions, we can start doing that tonight. You know, we need to know if you guys are comfortable setting an amount to direct me to come back with, with that resolution. You can certainly do that and start the process. If you want to wait until May, we can certainly do that. I would not recommend anything past May.
I don't think there's any need to wait. She gave us information that the $1,000 per student is absolutely a roll of the dice for us. And the $750 seems to be a comfort level, if you will. Nothing's really a comfort level when it's coming out of people's pockets, but that seems to be the overriding approval based on what Sue brought to us. Again, without knowing her, some of you, she's, she's been spot on every time but one. And they have just an excellent reputation as far as their surveys and how they affect their community. They've always got a real positive bent on it. So I would think we, we have to get moving on a 750 and look for our superintendent to put the wheels in motion toward that. But what do you think?
I think it's important for sure to be respectful to what the community, what their thoughts and their opinions were. And they obviously very clearly were telling us that we are not comfortable with this, but we are comfortable with this. And it, whatever the number is regardless, it's something that our building needs. So I think moving forward for sure is important.
Katie?
I agree. I agree completely. I think that it's important to listen to what the community is saying and I just think that that would be the comfort level of the majority of our voters. And I just think that whatever we can get as an increase would be helpful to our situation and help us to move forward. Because you can always change it again or try again and then another.
If it doesn't pass me, we'll be trying it again.
Yes.
Clint, what do you think?
Yeah, I'd like to go forward with the 750. There's no reason to roll the dice and try for something more. So, yeah, I have 58% support. I feel good about that. And definitely want to get going on a sooner or later and start our marketing and hope for the best in November. Try to fill our funding gap that we've had for quite a few years.
Luke?
I agree. I think the only thing, you know, I would like to see this be approved too at that 750 amount. And then, you know, I, the one thing that stood out to me was there was a fair amount or a fair percentage of people that needed more information. And I think that's when the wheels start, that we start working on capturing those people and getting them up to speed and answering questions that need to be answered. So the more time for that, the better, in my opinion.
Yeah, I think the more transparent we can be with educating on this is the why and this is the how and everything is huge.
We've had meetings in the past for our community and don't you think for a minute you won't be included in at least some of those? So prepare yourselves for that. Brian?
Yeah, I agree as well. I was, I was really pleased to see our community be willing to step up, recognizing that this is a need. This is not a want. It is absolutely a need that we have in the district. And, and they responded with it. I agree with Clinton, it's not worth rolling the dice. Go for a higher amount and I think proceed as well.
As has been said in the past, we need to, Jo Lynn said, we need to justify and rationalize where we're going, why we're going for this. So that'll come out in meetings. And once again, you're all invited. So Jeff, I think you've got what you needed here to proceed.
Can we formalize that?
Without motion?
Just a second, directing me to bring back resolutions for 750 is what I'm hearing?
So who would like to make that motion?
I will make a motion for you to come back with resolutions for the dollar amount of $750 that we're going to go for in our referendum.
I'll second it.
On the motion, Brian on the second. Jeff, you've been taxed with getting us moving. Any other discussion? All in favor of moving forward with Mr. Sampson and preparing for the fall election of 750 on our operating levy? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. That's a mouthful. You can see what's happening in our next regular board meeting. It's busy. And, well, we're, you've, you've extended us out, ma'am, for another three months. So taking a look at what we have. And once again, anytime you have anything that you'd like to put on the agenda that you feel is needed, please contact Lori, please contact Jeff, and we'll see if we can get it on. Having said that, it looks like our information is finished for the evening, so our meeting is finished for the evening. I would look for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
Jo Lynn on the motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Luke. Any other discussion? All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are finished. We are finished.